We'll call the January 18th meeting of the Norfolk School Committee to order. We will begin this meeting, as we do all of our meetings, by reading the mission statement. "The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world." Roll call, please.
Sarah Ward.
Lisa Sheldon.
Adora Champagne.
Victoria Saldana.
Barry Nectill.
Ingrid Allerney.
And one more to arrive shortly, I think. So, next item on our agenda is public comment. Any member of the public who would like to comment briefly on topics within our purview is welcome to do so now. I don't know everyone is...
You know what, actually, since I'm here...
Get it. Get after it.
...possibly bring up the fact that this just happened, that I know you...
Ty, you have to come to the microphone. You have to come to the mic.
Name, address.
You just did this?
You have to say your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Karen Murphy, 3 Strawberry Lane, here in Norfolk. Just curious, as far as aligning the public school calendars with the KP calendar, just curious, is that something that we really strive to do? I know we do have a lot of misalignment there. It makes it really difficult for us working parents. And I just wanted to bring that up as a public comment, since I'm sitting here anyway. And it just happened to us because we had Tuesday off, but I only had one off on Tuesday, and the other one had to go to school. And then next week, we have a half-day in one and not a half-day in the other. Makes it very difficult, so just wanted to mention that. Thanks.
So, normally for public comment, it's not a back-and-forth because we have to agenda items that we're going to comment on, but we can certainly take it under advisement. I know it's been discussed in the past, so we can discuss it again. Yeah.
So, because of open meeting law, we're not allowed to deliberate on things that aren't listed, but happy to discuss it. And if you want to give me a call, I'm happy to discuss it as well. Thanks.
Excuse me. Okay, so moving on, unless there's any more public comment? No? Okay, moving on, we have correspondence. We don't have any correspondence, that's why I don't have any exhibits. So, we are flying through our agenda. And then we have a school committee chair report listed on the agenda. There is nothing of substance to report from the school committee chair, which is myself, so we can cross that item off of the list and move on to Ingrid's portion of the evening, which is the superintendent's report and the number of agenda items listed thereunder.
Great. So, first, tonight, we welcome our CPAC board, who are here to present to the committee, talk a little bit about their goals, their mission, and some of the work that they've done. So, I'd like to invite you to the mic to share with the committee some of the material you've brought. Because we are recording, whoever's speaking does need to speak to the mic.
I'm Mike McCarthy. I am one of the co-chairs for the Norfolk CPAC. Who we are... Can I take this over here?
Yeah, we can grab a chair for you, too.
Yeah, we can move the whole...
No, I'm okay.
Okay.
Who we are. The Norfolk CPAC is run by volunteer parents, like us, and provides a great support system for families with all types of needs. We offer educational presentations, resources, information on the IEP process, 504s, and opportunities for parents and students alike to connect in a supportive and inclusive environment. Our current board members, myself, Mike McCarthy, Kayla will be speaking shortly, Ty is here as well, same with Melissa and Karen. Sarah wasn't able to make it. And then we have volunteers that are also on our board, Stephanie, Jamee, and Karen Mazzola, who I think we've all probably know within the community.
If you don't mind.
Thank you. And obviously mandated by law that we have to, schools required to establish a PAC. Massachusetts Special Education Law, Chapter 71B, requires the school district to establish a PAC. It assigns both an advisory and participatory function to the PAC. The following is an excerpt from Section 3 of Chapter 71B that pertains to PACs. In quotes, "The school committee of any city, town, or school district shall establish a parent advisory council on special education. Membership should be offered to all parents with children with disabilities and other interested parties. The parent advisory council duty shall include, but not be limited to, advising the school committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities, meeting regularly with schools officials to participate in the planning and the development and evaluation of the school committee's special educational programs. The parent advisory council shall establish bylaws regarding officers and operational procedures. In the course of its duties, under this section, the parent advisory council shall receive assistance from the school committee without charge, upon reasonable notice, and subject to availability of all staff and resources." Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. So, I'm Thais Hickman. As Mike mentioned, we do have bylaws. They are on our website, and we are registered as a nonprofit organization with the federal government. So, you know, we try to do everything according to, you know, our bylaws, that, you know, we operate, we meet monthly as an organization. Our meetings are open to everyone in the town to attend who has a child in the district. And then we do, you know, we host activities, workshops, and other fundraisers, which Kayla will talk about in a minute. But our mission here is to collaborate with and advise the school committee and administration to continually improve the educational experience for all Norfolk children and families. We promote improved education and success for students with disabilities, ensuring they receive equal access to education within our schools and community. The Norfolk CPAC provides a network for parents or guardians of children with disabilities to access local resources, gain support, and share ideas. CPAC encourages families to be involved in all district policy discussions. So, you know, one of the things we've been doing is working with other CPACs in the KP district, but also locally, to collaborate with them, to host events. For instance, you know, we're doing some work with Special Olympics. There's other things that we're doing outside the district, but obviously, our goal is to support the children that are in this district for all families. So, that's our mission. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Seer, also a board member. So, we're really probably going to get a little repetitive here with some of our slides and that we're all kind of covering different things, but just to drill in a little bit to what Mike and Ty both referred to, a couple of things here on what we do. I guess what I would add is, you know, beyond trying to partner with various members of the school community, we are also trying to create some relationships with other organizations within the Norfolk community as well. But really, first and foremost, we are here to support the parents with children who need to access different services here. So, that's kind of our first area, right? Like, working with you as the school committee and various members of the administration, including Dr. Tupper. We do hold that monthly meeting to make sure that we have access, you know, that parents have access to us, and we can also support them in their various needs that they need. We provide various resources, as Ty referred to. We have different events, different workshops, and things that we try to hold that are relevant to parents. We try to get the feedback on what would feel most relevant, you know, whether it's executive functioning, or ADHD workshops, or just, you know, there's obviously a wide variety of things that we cover. But just going back to the community outreach as well, we've done a lot more of that in the recent year, year and a half, really working with the fire department, the police department, Norfolk Recreation, because they have such a great relationship with the school district, trying to expand there and just make sure that we're working with the various groups, like also the PTO, Norfolk Lions, which, you know, everybody in town seems to have a partnership with them. So, next slide, please. So, just real quick, you can see here some of the past workshops that we've done, as I mentioned, wide variety of different topics that we try to cover. We do try to make sure that we're not doing the same things over and over again, that we are partnering with other local PACs as well. If they're already kind of doing something similar, we will try to, you know, use our resources as efficiently as possible. They hold one workshop on a topic, we might do a different one and try to invite each other's parent community.
Okay. So, I'll pass it over to Kayla to finish this out.
So, there is a lot on this slide. Kayla Costa, good to see you all. There is a lot on this slide, so I want to focus on just a few things. Every April, when we have our board elections, after the board is appointed, we start talking about what we want the next year to look like. We have a summer, we call it our summer strategy meeting. We've been having it, like, we had a couple of years where we had it outside in someone's backyard through COVID, but it was a really nice excuse to all get together and sit in a circle outside, social distance, and talk about what we want to accomplish for the year. So, what we came up with this year, I won't read the whole statement, but it's a really long fancy way of saying that we want to increase our visibility to parents in the district and in the community, while of course promoting inclusivity and always special education awareness. So, I wanted to highlight just a few things that we've been doing, starting last summer. So, in the community, we started last summer working with Norfolk Rec. Anne Proto is wonderful, and everybody in town knows her. She reached out to us, and we were so glad to hear from her, about promoting inclusion in the summer camp program. So, a lot of non-neurotypical kiddos that access special education services might have a really hard time at something like a summer camp, where it's really unstructured, a little chaotic, you know, you have very young people running it. It's super fun, but it can be very overwhelming. It can be triggering for some kids, but, you know, they want to go have fun with their friends, too. So, we started talking to Norfolk Rec and Anne Proto and her department about how we can help those kids access that program. So, we helped her with things such as putting a particular question on the signup for summer camp, where it said, like, "Please contact me about my child." And then we helped them talk about, like, the layout of having extra help, someone who was going to be sort of like a director of, it's not really a director of special education services, but someone who's in charge of helping the counselors sort of understand how to help these children. So, that sort of lead counselor then called back any of those parents that marked off that box and talked specifically about their child's needs. And it could be something as simple as, like, if you see that they're kind of, like, dysregulated, they might, it might look like this. And all they really need is just, like, a quiet minute, separated from the group. They like to talk about this, maybe they want to read their book. And that can, like, make the difference between a kid having to, like, get picked up and not be able to spend the day with their friends, which also really ruins their parents' day, and them being able to have a really successful day at camp. So, we were really proud of that. It was a pilot program, really, this summer. There were 12 kids that accessed it, and we got some really good feedback, and we're going to work on following up with them to see how we can assist them going forward this summer as well. So, also in the community, we've, you know, we have a really great relationship with the Norfolk Lions. They're amazing. Everyone in town knows them, they do. And if you don't, you should, like, go to one of their meetings or talk to one of them because they are an amazing group of people. They do so much for our community and surrounding communities. They've been a wonderful supporter of ours and a partner. They actually helped, they've donated money to us in the past for particular activities and services that we've provided to parents. We also worked just recently with the Norfolk PD and Fire. We had them at our November meeting to have a discussion about preparedness and response for children with special needs and adults in the community. We talked about the Autism Registration Program, which is a wonderful program that I hope everyone in town that needs it knows about it. It's really, should be called something, I think, other than Autism Registration Program because it's really not just for autistic individuals. It's for any kid or adult that might have some sort of special circumstance, that they might have a sensory issue, or if they run away, they like to hide in this place, or they tend to like these things. And it just really helps these officers and first responders to be able to help that individual, whether it be a child or an adult, in the best way that they can. So, we talked about those kind of things. They have Carter kits, which are amazing. They've had things like headphones and sunglasses, weighted blankets. These, you know, first responders in our town are amazing. Everyone knows that. They, we also talked about our school visits and the drills that they do. And one thing that came up, and that we actually were just talking to Dr. Tupper about at our monthly meeting, was how do we sort of bridge the gap between the drills that happen at school and how to sort of bring that same message home for parents, especially for kids that maybe are not able to...
None of them.
Thank you. Not able to explain to their parents what they learned that day about stop, drop, and roll. Or we should have a planned, you know, a safe spot to meet outside our house, or what would we do in this situation? So, one thing that we're going to work on in the future, for the rest of the school year, is to collaborate on bridging that gap, and maybe something as simple as a flyer goes home. And for the nonverbal children, maybe on their AAC device, their talkers, they have some picture cards that talk about the things that they talked about that day, so they can communicate that to their caregivers at home. So, those are some things in the community, our presence, increasing visibility. In our, of course, in our administration and our district, we meet with Dr. Tupper, Mike and I as co-chairs monthly. She was just at our meeting last month, last week, actually, our monthly meeting, feels like last month, giving an update on staffing and resources and, you know, our DESI compliance review, things like that. We had a great Q and A. She stayed and talked probably, like, much longer than she anticipated, but the parents who were there, I think, really appreciated that. And we just recently worked with the HOD in November to have an inclusive puppet show for the K through second graders. And then we are hoping to work with the school going forward for March. They're working on a Disability Awareness Month for Freeman Kennedy here. And we've got a small team of us working to hopefully bring in a speaker that's going to wrap into some classroom materials and interactive teaching strategies around, that focus on, like, empathy and inclusivity and the power, I love this from the website, the power of choosing to be kind. We are also exploring bringing back to life a playground communication board project that I am a former...
SLP.
SLP, thank you. I was just going to say teacher. Former SLP, I think, started, I'm not sure how long ago, last year or the year before, so that we can talk about how we can help bring those maybe to HOD in Freeman Kennedy. In terms of increasing our awareness and visibility to parents, we've really been working hard on that. That's one piece where we really feel like, we just want people to know we're here, like, we're here to help, we're here to answer questions, we're here to offer support. That's really the biggest one, because unless you have a child that has alternative needs outside of, you know, this nice little box, it's hard to really sympathize. You know, your friends, your family, they don't always understand what you're going through. So, we want to be here as an ear and a shoulder to listen in whatever those parents need. So, of course, we do all those wonderful workshops that Melissa talked about. We had Executive Functioning Workshop earlier in this year. We are working on another workshop in the next month or so with the Federation for Children with Special Needs. We are working with, hopefully, hoping to collaborate with some nearby CPACs in Milis for a spring workshop. And we're going to be sending out a mid-year parents' survey to see, like, what do parents really want to hear about? What do they want someone to come talk to them about? What is, like, the hot topic issue right now that they would like some information on? And then we just had in December, early December, before the holidays, we had a parent social instead of our meeting. And it was really fun, and we had a great turnout. We had a couple of different families join us, and it was so nice just to see people outside of school and to talk about things. We had it in the evening, right after parent-teacher conferences one night. We figured people had a babysitter already, just come join us afterwards. So, that was really fun. So, yes, that's how we are trying to increase our visibility to the community, to parents, working with our community members, working with Dr. Tupper and the administration and teachers, and trying to get our mission out there. So, thank you so much. And I talked a lot, so I will leave it to Karen to finish up.
I get the easiest slides. I'll sit. So, the whole point of all this is, we are open, we are here, we are welcoming to anyone, it doesn't matter, you know, how or what you can contribute, or if you just want to come and see what we're about. We meet monthly, everyone is always welcome. We usually meet on the second Thursday of the month at 7:30. We're meeting at the library, but TBT on our future locations. We met last week here.
You're going to come back to the library.
We'll be back at the library. One of our favorite places in town, opens back up again. And obviously, we have a website, so it's norfolkcpac.org. You can see all of our information there. Obviously, we have a calendar, and we are always looking for people to come join us, regardless of their lot in life. We are open to all and welcome to all, including Mitch. We refuse to update it because he was cutest when he was a puppy. But yes, so that's what, and I think, I don't think those, not sure. And so, we're all over, all of the various places. So, we're on Facebook, we're on Instagram, we're on Twitter. You can email us. We have, we do have a parent support group, so I did want to mention that, too. Where it's like, it's a closed Facebook group where very specifically Norfolk parents can just kind of check in and ask questions and not be afraid to reach out as needed. So, we do find that to be a really great resource for local parents as well. So, please spread the word. We want to make sure parents know about us, especially know that they're not alone. And yeah, we're happy to be here and happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I think before, I don't know, Anna, if you have anything that you want to say, but I just wanted to say again, the CPAC board, as I mentioned at the very beginning, but didn't maybe highlight, it is a volunteer group. These people give a tremendous amount of time to the district. Have, you didn't mention, but they also send out a regular newsletter to provide resources, tips, information to parents. The programs that they brought in over the years, I think, have really grown, and I think the, what they have accomplished as a group has really developed over the last, I don't know, eight or nine years since I've been here, working with Dr. Tupper. We also have reps from the CPAC board on various committees. Mike is representing the group on our strategic planning committee right now, so that we can make sure that we're considering actively the voices of all of the students in our district. So, thank you so much for all of your hard work. They also host things like the Drunk or Treat, which is very much enjoyed by all of our students and families. So, thank you for your work, and we appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
And you have to come to the mic if you want to say anything.
I do?
Yes.
Sit in the chair.
Although, Ingrid, I have a question.
I just, yeah. Oh, thank you very much. Yeah, I just want to say, this group is amazing. And every year that I've been here since, you know, 2012 in this job, it just feels like the parent group gets stronger and stronger, and they're able to do more and more outreach. But one of the, you know, real foundations of their work is really making sure that they're available for families here in Norfolk in order to support them. And so, it's just really a pleasure to work with each and every one of you. And, you know, Thais, and Karen, and Kayla, and Mike have all been CPAC chairpeople and persons. And Melissa, you're just been a wonderful regular member. Yeah, charging up the finances, it's been wonderful. So, yeah, they put in a lot of effort.
Right in the fire.
Yeah, on behalf of kids. And it's really, really meaningful work, and so, thank you very much. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I was going to say what, just echo on what Dr. Allardy said in terms of how much I've, this is my fifth year, I believe, on school committee, and how much I've seen you grow, and just, it really is amazing. So, kudos to you for being such a strong support in the community. And my second thing is, I work in the field of special education, and I know that I hear a lot from my parents asking for neurodiversity, and really, really trying to get that term out and talking about different learning profiles. And that's just something, you're nodding, so I'm just hoping that maybe somewhere that, not to add another future goal to you, but, you know, maybe that's something I think is, and I'm hearing it a lot in my own professional forums, too.
Any other questions for the group? Thank you for coming out for another night out after your library challenges. We appreciate it. Next item on the agenda. At the last meeting, I presented an update to my goals for this school year, and really the, I was just adding an additional goal to look at the requirements of the feasibility study and getting public information about the school expansion project out there. We reviewed and discussed the goals, but we hadn't listed it on the agenda for vote. So, I don't know that we need to re-discuss, but it is on the agenda tonight for a vote to approve the new goals. Happy to answer any questions. So, we need to kick things off. A motion to approve the revised superintendent's goals?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion or questions from anyone? I don't have, I think we covered it.
They covered it.
We just didn't have it listed to them. Okay. So, all those in favor of the updated professional goals and benchmarks for Dr. Allardy?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? No? Motion passive?
Okay. Next on the agenda, at our last meeting, Vicky Saldana presented a review of our MCAS scores and talked about the strengths and challenges that we were facing and our plans moving forward. Typically, every January after the MCAS presentation, I provide the school committee with an update on the district baselines and benchmark report, because we think it's really important that we are measuring our success as a school district beyond just academic scores. So, the baseline and benchmark report provides information and comparative data against many of our comparison communities across multiple dimensions that we consider elements of success. So, we look at our demographics, we look at class size, we look at teacher education and experience, student attendance, student discipline, technology. We talk about budget and per pupil spending, and then we look at MCAS data as well as our district benchmarks data. So, I just wanted to walk through the critical findings in this report. Again, once presented to the school committee, it'll be available to the public on our website. And I'll walk through the first half, and then Vicky will walk through the academic and curriculum data. As far as the demographics for the district, over the last five years, our population has been relatively stable, as far as demographics, male and female students, the racial profile, socioeconomic status. That data that the Department of Education collects annually has been fairly stable in Norfolk. The two categories that are a little bit different, we've talked before, our population of English language learners, while it's been stable over the past three to five years, it's grown dramatically over the last 10. So, back in 2013, we only had one student identified as speaking an alternate language other than English in their home as their first language. At this point, we have 25 students who are English language learners in the district. So, that population has grown, although it seems to have sort of flattened out over the last few years. The other population that we are seeing changes in is what the Department of Ed defines as economically disadvantaged. That population of students in Norfolk has grown. You can see the data there, but it's shown some steady increases from about 4% of our, 4.7% of our students identified as economically disadvantaged in 2019 to 7.3% in 2021. So, that's a pretty significant shift. All of the data is in the chart, so you can take a look at the trends and the actual The next thing that we wanted to share is around class size. Again, Norfolk has a policy in place for class size. All of our classrooms are within the policy limits, but the policy gives a range. When we look, the Department of Ed identifies 12 comparison communities that are considered like communities for Norfolk to compare metrics with. Most of these are K6 or K8 systems, and that's part of why they're identified as like communities. When we look at our class size averages, we used to be on the lower end of the policy limit in Norfolk for class size. So, we had 17, 18 students per class. That has grown steadily, as has the growth in the town. So, as we have more student enrollment, budget restrictions and space restrictions limit our capacity to add additional classrooms, and our class size... limit our capacity to add additional classrooms, and our class size has grown. So, while we're still within the policy limits, we're at the upper end of the policy limits with an average class size of 20. You can see, again, we provide three years of data for comparison purposes. So, we've ranged from 20, 19, 20. So, it's pretty flat, but we're at the higher end. And in relation to all of our comparisons communities, we have higher class sizes than most, with only Berkeley and Sudbury being, you know, higher than Norfolk. Teacher educational experience, obviously, the greatest impact on, on students' education, students' achievement and learning happens in the classroom, and that's a tribute to the teachers that we have in Norfolk, their skill level, their professionalism, and their dedication. As far as licensure, all of our teachers are licensed in the field that they teach in. In 2021, 2022, we had one educator working on an emergency license, which was pretty common throughout the pandemic, certainly less than the state average. Teacher retention rates, we're very fortunate, we have a high retention rate for our teachers, which means that from year to year, most of the teachers that we have returned to the district. So, you can see in, in relation to comparison communities, Norfolk is at the upper end with teacher retention data, 94% in 2020, 93.9% 2021, 2022. There is a dip in 2019, 2020, and, and that is partially in relation to, with the COVID closure and the budget crisis, we had to issue some RIF notices to some of our staff members, and some people took positions in other districts at that point. But we have a strong teacher retention rate data. We wanted to really break that down, and we wanted to look at the, the teacher retention rates for just our new hires, to see if there was a difference between teachers that have been in the district a long period of time, or people that are just coming in. We did find that the retention rates, three-year retention rate for brand-new hires is lower, significantly lower, at 54%. When we looked at the reasons for that, it doesn't appear that we're losing a significant number of new teachers to other districts. There were a couple of positions of the 12 teachers who didn't continue, several positions were eliminated, or programs were changed. In addition, in the first three years of teaching, sometimes we choose not to renew a contract of a teacher. We did lose, of, of those 12 teachers, three to, to alternate districts, and several were during that COVID period. Teacher qualifications, 90% of our educators have advanced degrees, masters and beyond, and 58% of our teachers have been teaching in Norfolk for over 10 years. So, we have a very highly skilled, highly qualified, and, and stable teaching staff. Student attendance is something we also look at, it's an informal metric that looks at, it can be an indirect measure of school climate. We have a very high percentage of our students attending school, 96.4% is the average attendance rate for Norfolk. You can see, we have a very low percentage of students that are chronically absent, or absent more than 10 days. This chart, we can't organize in, in order of.
Rank.
Rank, because the metrics vary within the categories. So, we might be higher for attendance, and then lower for chronic absenteeism. But you can see, our, our attendance for students is very high across the board, across all years measured, and we have a very low rate of chronic absenteeism. The next is within student discipline. Again, this is another indirect measure of school culture and climate. We do have very strong programs in place for social emotional learning. We did a curriculum review a couple of years ago. We have the Open Circle that has been in place at the HLAD for a long time. We have the program at the Freeman Kennedy is Second Step, and we also use a bullying reduction program from MARK that supplements both of those, as well as the Second Step bullying prevention across all grade levels. The, the data that the state collects is only around in, in-school and out-of-school suspension, which are used for more significant levels of behavior, and I'm sure most people are probably aware that the laws just changed in Massachusetts, and suspension is, is prohibited without significant attempts made to keep students in district, and multiple, documentation of multiple interventions that have been put in place prior to issuing suspension. But Norfolk has lower rates than most comparison communities of out-of-district suspension, which is a tribute to the programs we have. As everybody is, we've talked about at prior school committee meetings, we have seen an increase in student discipline issues over the past couple of years post-pandemic. We have also seen a significant increase in student mental health issues statewide across that, and that is something that we are looking at and working on, looking at how we can better support that. But overall, in terms of significant disciplinary issues that merit suspension or in-school or out-of-school, we are lower than most comparison districts. Technology is definitely a strength of our district. We are going to be having in the spring a technology open house, so you can see, and parents and families can visit. We haven't been able to do that for the past few years, as there was restrictions on gatherings and assemblies, but we've done a really good job of building our technology program, as well as our science and engineering curriculum. We have a maker space at the Freeman Kennedy, students do all kinds of work around, pre-engineering work, robotics, design, all kinds of things there. We used to have one at the HLAD school, as you're well aware, because of space restrictions, we had to convert the maker space at HLAD to a general ed classroom. The equipment is now housed on the stage and travels with our technology integration specialists. We have a one-to-one device ratio for students at the kindergarten, we have iPads for the students at the upper grades, it's Chromebooks. I think, prior meeting, our technology director also spoke and talked about the number of districts that have come to observe our programs in technology and our maker space, and our students presenting at the national conferences. So, we're really proud of the programs we have. Another metric that we typically look at is our budget comparisons. I know everybody has seen this chart multiple, multiple times. Norfolk has one of the lowest per pupil spending of all of the comparison communities, the only district that spends less per pupil than Norfolk is Berkeley. So, we are in the very low end. I think the town and the parents see a really strong return on their investment of educational dollars. We have high rates of student achievement, as we've talked about, highly qualified teachers, strong academic programs, but we do a lot with a very little. Again, you can see, we've been in the same place in the rankings over the past three years, and this is really apples-to-apples comparisons. This is based on the end-of-year certified audit reports that districts have of all the dollars within, in the district divided by the number of students you have. So, where, where you classify individual costs, it's considered all, all-in, your total expenditure. This is a concern, we've talked about, we know that the town has very little revenue outside of property and real estate taxes, but this is, becomes more and more challenging as we are working to meet the needs of the growing community. I'll turn it to Vicky, who'll walk through some of the achievement and academic data.
So, the first data that we kind of captured is our MCAS data, I'm not going to go into too much detail, just because we spent a significant amount last time, kind of talking about the results. It's also on our district website, the full presentation that was put together for the last school committee meeting, so you can access it through our curriculum page and the district web page, which has a lot more details. But just to give you just a brief overview, one of the main points that I just want to bring back is that we can't really compare the 2021 results to the 2122 results, because the tests were really different. During the pandemic, students were given a shortened test, and so, the, the results really are not, you're not comparing two of the same tests. But we're just kind of looking at it for science, as you can see, we did show some growth, you know what I mean, about 60% of our, of our students are in the meeting and exceeding category, which is what the M and D stands for. We've also seen, for English language arts, we kind of talked about last time, how that was an area that we did see a slight decline, and like I said, not even comparing it from these two years because of the different tests, but overall, what we usually trend in Norfolk, usually our students perform much higher, but because of the interrupted learning and, you know, everything that the school's going to have to go through during the pandemic, it really follows the state trends. Overall, we saw a decline in, in English language arts results, especially in the areas of And one of the things that we did see, we did help study, which this particular graph doesn't show, but you can see on the report, is that our reading results, though, stayed really strong. So, really, the only area that we saw significant decline was in, within writing. But like I said, last time when I presented, we kind of talked about all the things, we've kind of anticipated this, we have a lot of things that we've put in place to kind of help address. Reviewing our ELA curriculum is one of them, we really have focused on kind of giving, building in some extracurricular time for teachers to be able to address writing, you know, throughout the day. So, we've taken a lot of strategic steps to, to be able to address, like what we saw. We still outperformed the state, which, again, this graph just kind of looks at our performance, but we are, in every area, we, we perform higher than, than the state, which is still very promising. But just looking for our Norfolk standards, it's like, it was a slight decline in, within our ELA curriculum. On the other hand, we did see an increase in how our students were performed in mathematics. So, math kind of took the opposite turn, we saw more, we still outperformed the state in all our categories, but just, we're talking about Norfolk, we did see a decline during the pandemic in how our students were able to perform in, on math assessments, which doesn't make sense, because again, it was really difficult subject to teach in a hybrid setting, because students don't really have access to manipulatives, and it is a hard subject to be able to teach in another environment. But because we took strategic steps in response to that, we did see an increase in our scores, which is very promising. So, we're in the upward trend in mathematics. The next part, which is not in the MCAS presentation, but these are our district benchmark results. So, for reading, our students take the FACLIS and FANL benchmark assessment system, which we call the BAS, and this is the cumulative results per grade level of how many students, percentage-wise, met grade level reading standards. So, if you can kind of take a look at it vertically between the years, so this is grade kindergarten students who are now first graders, you can see that there was like a big increase, too, which is kind of like what the MCAS results did also show, that our reading scores stayed pretty strong. So, we can kind of see the parallel comparison in growth. In grade six, we implemented a new assessment called the MACE, which is a basic early literacy skill, which is throwing up another acronym just in case you heard of DIBELS, which was used for many years, but, so we did, we only have one year worth of data. This is the second year where we are, and we've implemented a new literacy assessment, K through six, and, so we'll have more data for you next year, once we kind of gather it. But on the MACE, on the MACE last year, 50% of our students in grade six showed a grade level mastery with, with those specific skills that they assessed. It's not represented here, but where we gave our beginning of year benchmark this year for grade six, the scores did go up. So, and again, I think we have a promising trend. And lastly, this is our district benchmark for mathematics, so this is something that we created with, as a district to kind of measure grade level mastery, and the benchmark is given, we have a screener that's given at the beginning of the year, and then we have a mid-year benchmark, and an end-of-year benchmark. The end-of-year benchmark measures cumulative skills that students are taught the whole year, and this is the result, so you can see from the two years. These benchmarks can't be compared, because we didn't change the test from 2021 to 2122. And as you can see, like, as the mathematics got more complex, our scores did decline, but we did see in some spots a little bit of increase. We're looking at grade five overall was a grade level, was one of the grade levels that was really strongly affected by Ms. Masco's, because those students were coming in from grades three and four, having interrupted schooling, that's where a lot of the, like those big skills are being taught, especially in terms of like algebraic thinking and fractions. So, in fifth grades, when they really kind of bring everything together and elevate it, so it's no surprise that our grade five students, so kind of need some extra reinforcement in those areas. And these are our comparative results for MCAS between the towns that Dr. Alardi mentioned, which kind of are, are alike towns. So, for ELA, as you can see, Norfolk, in the terms of how many percent of students we have in meeting and exceeding, we are towards the bottom, even, I mean, it's a close, it's by like the couple, like a point or two off, but we're still trending below. So, we're hoping, like I said, this is what kind of initiated us to have our review of English language arts curriculum, too, just to kind of see if there's anything that we can kind of strengthen, and we need to take a look at to make sure that our, our students are performing strongly. And this graph kind of shows how we are performing comparatively in math, and as you can see in mathematics, where we were much higher toward the end. So, like, it just shows that some of the shifts that we're able to make, and having students in, being able to be present in school for mathematics instruction definitely has helped increase our scores. And lastly, this is our performance in science. So, for science, for, this is MCAS again for the exceeding, as I mentioned in the previous presentation, only our fifth graders take our science MCAS, and then they take it again in eighth grade. So, the students have to have accumulation of skills that are being tested, that they've started learning from kindergarten, so it's many years, you know. So, again, we came up pretty strong in science in comparison to the state, so you can see we're kind of in the middle in terms of our counterparts in other districts. But the area that we kind of found after, like a data closer, is that the skills that students need extra reinforcement, which we have been kind of embedded in our curriculum, too, were the ones that they invested in third and fourth grade, because again, when we had the pandemic, it was, it was a, it was an area that was difficult to kind of transfer into a hybrid learning environment. So, we anticipate we're going to go back up as we have returned to more, to more regular schooling. I think I'll turn it back over to Dr. Alardi to talk about special education trends.
So, another thing that we wanted to look at and share with the committee is, is unpacking, again, some changes in our demographic data. Special education, we have seen an increase in the percentage of our students since 2014 that have been eligible for special education services. Back in 2018, it was about 14.9% of our overall student body. That percentage is closer to 18.5 now, but it has been stable over the last three years. I think the chart below, if I could give you a scroll down, the percentage of our students in the early childhood programs, ages three to five, that are eligible for services, has remained constant, so you don't see a lot of growth or variety in there. It was 13, 32 students in 2008, 30 students in 2022. Where we have seen growth is in the percentage of students qualifying for additional special education services in ages six to 12. We've seen more growth there. I think it's important to note, though, that this growth parallels the overall growth of the district. So, the percentage of students, and you can see that on the next chart, has remained at 18.4, 18.5, 17.5% in 2021, 22. So, the overall percentage, while we see more students eligible, it mirrors the growth in the total population. And we are under the state average, which has been about 18.4. So, we were at the state average in 1920, and under the state average in 2021 and 2021, 22. What we did notice in looking at that data further was there, while there has been growth in the population, it is just, it's not all universal. We're seeing more of our students qualify with moderate to higher levels of need, which is why, over the past couple of years, we've come to the school committee, and we've been really focused on developing and building more internal programs, so that we can fully serve and meet the needs of the students that, that are coming to us. We've had a really strong commitment over the past decade to, to being able to provide high-quality programs within district and keeping our students here. So, that is, that's what's driving the development of some of the new programs that we've, we've brought on over the past couple of years.
Ingrid, is there space for these programs? I mean, I would imagine.
It's a challenge. One of the things that we've talked about, that's, we, we are not able to meet, while we're able to meet the needs of students that are eligible for special education services in preschool. in preschool, we are not able to meet the community demand for early childhood programming. We don't have any additional open classrooms at each all day, so we're capped in terms of capacity there by space. We have prioritized the addition of some of these programs. So we have, we have relocated things, we have changed the teacher's workroom, we've converted spaces because again, we want to make sure that we have high-quality programs available to students that need them. And so that's our first priority in, in developing space. As you know, we're undergoing a feasibility study and we're looking at the needs of all of our students and what potential this new building project could, could provide for expanding space for specialized programs.
I think that's really important, thinking about the least restrictive environment or having a nice classroom to go to.
Yeah.
You know, with windows. I'm not saying that they don't have windows, but I just know from working in the field of special education that sometimes this happens. So just looking forward in the future, just making sure that people know that space is also related to keeping kids in district.
Absolutely.
It's not just, that's it. It's my pitch.
So overall, in terms of summary, I think we continue to provide a high-quality, excellent education for our students with limited educational dollars. As our class sizes, as we talked about, our class sizes are trending now on the higher end of our comparison communities. We are in the process of doing a comprehensive review of our English Language Arts program. That was last reviewed about five or six years ago. So we're looking to, we know that there's some gaps there and we want to look at what we need to do to enhance and enrich the curriculum. We're proud of the strong teaching force that we have and I'm happy to take any questions that people might have regarding the baseline benchmark report.
I just want to, it's a point of clarification.
Sure.
I know the answer, but to our viewership. I have had a couple of other people, a couple of people across the course of my also five years, I guess, if you've been here five years, on the committee, referenced the per-people spending. And I want to make, I want to clarify that that is, as you said, it's all in. So some individuals have approached me and said, well, the town gives you X, you get more in grants. No, we do not. That is all in. That includes not just the money that the town allocates to the budget.
Yeah.
But the money that is received from grants that the teachers and administrators write on their own. That's everything. So it's still not enough.
We're challenged by grants a little bit too because we're such a small district. So like a couple of years, like I've been trying to write some grants to get some curriculum funding and everything, but because when they prioritize, like we can't compete with the big cities, you know, it's just, so it's often, that's a challenge for us too, is to be qualified for grants.
Do you have the manpower to write all the grants that you need to, or is that also a challenge?
No. Vicky and I write a lot of grants and our teachers write a lot of grants. We do not have a grant officer.
For those at that point, I mean, that is, that number is 20% hustle, you know, of this building and the HOD.
I mean, we don't pass up any priority grants, like we'll do what we need to do to make sure that, you know, we get them. But I just wanted to say that it does include all the grants, but at the same time, because like it's not like we have lots of funding coming from grants unfortunately.
And I am consistently enthralled at the way that grant applications leave the district. Like I mean, there is no opportunity is, is left to go by the wayside. So I, I'm very appreciative of it.
And I would say it includes all the federal and state grants. Small teacher grants that they write to PTO aren't reported in the end of year, but that's really small money. And I think the, as you said, the town offsets some of the facilities cost, but we report that in our end of year. We have to report all money received from the town, so that is an all-in cost. Barry, did you want to add anything to that, or have we?
I'd also just add, the state formula for funding for school districts has changed in the last couple of years. It very much favors districts with high percentages of students with needs, not special needs, but financial needs, economic needs. So a town that is less healthy financially than Norfolk is going to get a larger share of the overall state pot. So that's, there's a cap on how much we can get because we have relatively healthy towns.
Yeah, and I think one of the other things that we'll talk about going forward in, in terms of budget, but the eligibility formula for federal entitlement grants, like the Title I grant that we receive and that we've received for the past 10 years, and the Title II A grant that we receive, it's small proportionally in Norfolk. We only receive about 30, or we used to receive about 30,000 in Title I, about 10,000 in Title II A. But the, the formula the federal government's now using for that, even though I just shared with you, in our baseline and benchmark, we're seeing growth in the economically disadvantaged group based on our applications, free and reduced lunch, and our census data. They're determining the eligibility based on federal census data. And so we will, we lost the Title I grant last year. We're not eligible for it and we are losing Title II A next year because underreporting in the census. So that's also a disadvantage. That's about $50,000 that we have to absorb into our operating budget because we're losing the federal grants. So those are further challenges that a lot of small suburban districts are facing right now.
That's a, that's a sting for us a little bit, yeah.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, just a comment, but it just seems to me, looking at, and I didn't do the, do the math, but that the towns with the lower class sizes have the higher MCAS scores. I don't know, that's me looking at it very quickly. And I think my concern, and I, I feel like I have to state this as a school committee member, is I understand that, you know, we are, I understand the budget and we are a big chunk of it, and yet at the same time, the town is growing and we're growing with children and, you know, the space issues, but I'm also concerned about class size and I keep seeing us dip down. This is just my comment. And, you know, I, I don't know, it's, we're going to need everyone's support for the budget, I would think. Sorry, I'm sitting on your budget toes, but, because I just.
But it's true, and as I said earlier today, that like we are providing the best education we can, but we do have fewer resources. Some districts, there are some districts at this point spending 10,000 more per people.
There are only so many times you can line five people up to run the same race and give one of them 70% of the food and give everybody else 100% of the food and expect them to keep winning the, like you can't run a marathon on an empty tank. It's, and I think this district has done an amazing job with the resources that they have, but the reality is, is that there are more students.
The continued enrollment growth, the continued development is, is making the financial challenges harder.
And it's, it's hard. It's really hard as a teacher, like to have various children of different, you know, they're coming in all different with their abilities and you are put, and then you have social, emotional needs, and then you have learning needs and putting out fires. And if you're just one teacher, you know, you can't really get to that extra teaching, the reteaching that you want to do. And that's, that's my concern moving forward. Hopefully, parents will speak out if they want smaller class sizes. So that's it.
Any other questions on the baseline?
I'm just saying, like if any questions, like Dr. Pepper, Dr. Anger, and myself are available, like just feel free to reach out because anything is reported, like more information.
All right, with that, and as we started to talk about budget, I'm going to turn it over to Barry to give you the second quarter budget update.
Good timing. So this is through December 31st, so it's six months of the fiscal year, but four months of the school year. And that's important to know as we look at the numbers a little bit because there's still six months of spending for things like professional development, supplies and services, the utilities that we have in our budget. So you do see over on page 10 is probably the page that I like to go to, you do see some accounts with, with positive balances, but it's really made up, as I said, things like that you'll spend down in the next six months. And this assumes that all of our salaries are trued up, so every, every salary that we know, we assume will be here through the end of the year and the ones that we know that won't are, are reflective here. So we sit with a balance of about $96,000, 96,301, or less than 1% of our budget that isn't identified as either spent or encumbered or a salary that we know. And that'll change. That's a fair amount for four months of operations. The areas that we most keep our eye on are all the special education costs, primarily tuitions and transportation. And then overall, keep our eye on keeping our buildings in good shape. So maintenance is another area we keep an eye on. I feel like we're in really good shape in the operating budget with six months of school left, six months in the fiscal year and six months of school. You brought up grants. If you want to flip to page 11, it's good timing. We have eight grants. The biggest ones are a couple of federal grants related to special education. We are, we have a tiny bit of COVID money left in our SIR III, that, this will be the last year of that. We've spent about $100,000 in grants this year, most of which is in our two special education grants, and most of that is salary in the special education grants. Over on the revolving side, we have seven revolving funds. The biggest ones are food service, the preschool revolving fund, and the SAC revolving fund. And most of the spending, the $367,000 that we've spent this year is, is in those three grants. So, I'm sorry, three revolving funds. So we're in good shape with six months to go and we'll keep a close eye on all the, all the big accounts that typically we do. So any questions, happy to answer.
Sounds good.
I don't want to jinx it.
He kept saying that.
Thanks.
Something's going to go.
The next thing that we have on the agenda is the feasibility study update. So as you know, we've been working with AI3 Architects on a feasibility study for a school expansion project at Freeman Kennedy. That project's really well underway at this point. They have made multiple site visits. They've done building tours of all of our mechanical and operational systems. They've done a building tour to look at the current status and current conditions within both buildings. They've looked at all of the technology needs. We also had a half-day visioning session where they met with different groups of educators to think about what the potential needs in the new space might be, also considering what might not be working currently within the space that we have. So for example, at Freeman, we had to convert the science lab to a general classroom. We don't have a science lab currently. So some of those things in their recommendations might be relocation of some existing classrooms and services based on the feedback from the visioning session. They would like to meet with us on February 2nd and they're going to give us a progress update. And from there, we'll be meeting bi-weekly with them as they work through their final recommendations and proposals. AI3 wants to come to the February School Committee to present the progress update to the full committee, so we're planning on having them there. And then they are also planning to do two public sessions, one in February and one in April, to go through all of the research that they collected, the findings, and talk about the proposals to the community and any interested parties. So that's going, going well at this point. They have completed existing condition summaries for both buildings. They have updated the current existing floor plans based on changes that we've made to accommodate the growth in enrollment, given the space that we have. They have, they have also proposed floor plan options for the addition that they're working through, and they are in the process of completing a traffic study to look at what would, what the impact of this addition would be on traffic patterns at Freeman Kennedy. So all of that will be presented at the February School Committee meeting and then again, at the two public sessions. We will be meeting bi-weekly with them, with a school-based team and potentially one of the members of the School Committee Subcommittee for Feasibility. We have to have it just be one, so we'll talk about that later to see if either Sarah or Midora want to join that group because it won't, otherwise it would be a school committee meeting. So, so that's where we are. Happy to answer any questions that anybody might have on that.
Can't wait to see it.
It's going to be exciting.
Yeah, it's exciting.
And AI3 is confident that we should have the full recommendations by April and be able to, if need be, present something at Springtown meeting?
Yes, yeah, they're on, on schedule right now.
That's awesome.
Again, with the working committee, they want to meet bi-weekly because they're trying to refine what the recommended option would be. And they'll be coming again to the School Committee to finalize the, the recommended option to go forward with, and that'll be in April. Okay. All right. Next item is substitute rates. As you know, we have a change in the minimum wage and we need to make some adjustments to our substitute rates for the, for the year. We also have done some comparative studies and we are low on the recommended or on their current rates for substitutes for nurses compared to the market. So Roxanne has put together a memo recommending some substitute pay increases. So moving the instructional assistant paraprofessionals to 98 per day, teachers 115, nurses 163, long-term substitute, meaning that they're covering over 90 days at 175 per day, and a long-term paraprofessional substitute at 110 per day. That means that we're in compliance. It was really the paraprofessionals that with the change in minimum wage would have been a problematic. All the others were above, but we need to adjust them accordingly due to the responsibilities of the role. So we are proposing the rates just reviewed for effective immediately for the wage increase.
Okay, so we are looking for a motion to approve the new substitute rates as proposed. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just have a question. Would it backdate to that January 9th date?
I'm sorry?
Would the salary change backdate to January 9th?
It would be effective, again, it would be effective immediately. So we haven't had any, all of the, it wouldn't backdate, it wouldn't change, it'd be effective immediately. We have been in compliance because we haven't had subs in that payroll until we've adjusted this, so.
KP just increased their subpay too, to make it more in line with other local districts.
Well, and it's fair to point out too, that we've raised subrates before and continue to struggle.
Yep.
With equipment. Substitutes into the building, so.
Great.
From a legal standpoint, I like being compliant and we will try to get some more subs in. All right, so all the who's in favor?
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? No, motion passes.
All right, I think we're on to committee reports.
All right, you want? I'm first, okay. So KP, we meet twice a month and I do have a lot of information to share. There's a lot of great stuff as usual going on by KP Student Councils. Some things, they had their annual high school play, they've had their concerts, they had a Model UN conference, KP cares, lots of really awesome things they're bringing back there this year. They're going to travel, there's a couple of different trips, one, one to Spain and one to France. So that was really exciting. The district has received a lot of small grants in terms of student council activities, National Honor Society. They formed a superintendent, Paul Zinni is retiring, KP, and they have formed a search committee goals, I mean, search committee, and they've discussed their goals and review. They had their first budget review. So Norfolk is being assessed the most this fiscal year. So we will owe more than Plainville and Rentham. Oh, and they're looking at a renovation of the library media center and they have a couple of drawings from there. So it's broken into, so it's just more user-friendly for the kids, it's a little bit more updated. Right now, it looks like something from The Breakfast Club. You don't really want to hang out there. And they want to make small classrooms because there's a space issue at KP too. Space issues is very problematic at the high school. Let's see. And the other big thing that we talked about at, that was the December 19th meeting and at the January 9th meeting, the big thing that they talked about, which was really exciting, is that they presented data on the number of kids who either take advanced placement classes or what they call advanced classes. And they have a very high number of kids who are at least trialing one advanced class because they've been pushing them not only, you know, try, just try and, try something new, try and work on something that you may not normally have done before. So they're pretty proud of that. That's it.
The policy committee did not meet tonight, but we do have the student discipline and policy to come for vote tonight. There are just some incidental changes.
Yep. So the first policy. Yep. So the first policy, again, we have the prior, our current student discipline policy came from the MASC model policy. And there have been some changes in response to the new student discipline law. Again, our prior policy gave reasons for suspension. Many of those are no longer things that you can suspend a student for. So they've been updated. The highlighted sections of the model policy are new language that MASC has proposed and that the subcommittee felt we should adopt. Again, everything that's different is highlighted in yellow. It also has the reference at the end, the new legal references to the updated laws. They added the term guardian throughout. So this is just incidental, nothing substantial to the policy. That's ready for a vote.
So we are looking for a motion to accept the revised student discipline policy filed JIC.
So moved.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion?
I do. Sorry. So actually, at KP, they brought a lawyer in, and he talked about this at length. And this was pre-school committee meeting. And is this based upon, because he seemed to think, or he said, he told us that this was kind of a brand-new regulation, and people weren't really, didn't, they were kind of caught off guard by it. So my question is, is this mask, is this updated with all that information? So they recently did this?
They recently revised this policy in response to that.
Okay.
But there are, again, from the laws, there are additional regulations and things that we have to put in place in terms of documenting multiple efforts. That is not governed. The details of that are not in policy. Policy's the broad overview, and then districts have to identify and develop those.
Yeah, okay. That was my question.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we had two others for, three other policies that are first readings. So the, again, MASC's legal team reviews policies annually. They reverse, they release updated policies or recommended new policies based on changes to legislation that happen over the course of the year. We have a current policy on harassment. They are recommending an additional specific policy around harassment of students. So this is, the policy subcommittee reviewed the language of the proposed model policy and felt it was comprehensive. So we are recommending bringing forward the MASC policy on student harassment to supplement the general harassment policy that we have in the district. And this is just a first reading, no vote. It's all new content. We don't have a current policy.
This is interesting.
If there's any questions or comments on this for the policy subcommittee, we can take it back, but it goes three readings prior to a vote.
Does the bus count, I would assume?
Any, any school-based program or the bus, yeah, which is an extension of the school.
So harassment is different than bullying. Bullying, so harassment can occur once, and bullying obviously is, like, targeted, and it's repeated, and it's...
Power differential, designed to intimidate, yeah.
They have conflicts, kids, right? Adults do. So what would be the difference? I mean, will that be kind of really, I guess my question is, where it says harassment may be described as written, verbal, or physical, da-da-da-da-da, harassment or abuse, like, how repeated remarks? Like, if somebody writes a note, let's say, like, "You stink," like, is that harassment?
No, you'd have to, and the definition of harassment's in our general policy as well. But it depends on the nature, and they're specific within our handbook that define different types of harassment, sexual harassment.
Right.
General harassment. But it is different than bullying, that there's not a power differential. It doesn't have to be designed to intimidate, incite fear, those kinds of components of bullying. So it could be, depending on the nature of it, that is, again, you can see the definitions aren't included in here, written, verbal, or physical nature, designed to embarrass, distress, agitate, disturb, trouble students when, and then it defines it further within here. So harassment and bullying are different, and the threshold for harassment is a little bit lower, as you said, than bullying.
That's what I was just wondering if they did at once, because kids make bad choices.
And consequences are tied to the intensity, whether it's repeated over time. Those are differentiated.
And then you have to take into, I would assume, take into account, too, whether it's a result of a child's disability, too. Would that be part of it, too?
It would probably in the consequence, but harassment is.
Harassment, huh? Okay. Interesting. Okay.
And then there's two other policies, again, that are new to the district. One is about retaliation. Again, these are newly proposed from MASC. And then there's one about a non-discrimination policy. So again, these are all to supplement and to address some of the gaps and specificity of legislation around these topics. And these are all first readings. Happy to answer any questions on those, or if there's any feedback for the policy subcommittee you want us to look at further. If not, then that's all the policy has tonight.
Okay. We good on first readings?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Moving on. We are in the home stretch now. School committee meeting minutes, we need to review and approve the meeting minutes from December 14th.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, school committee meeting minutes from December 14th, 2022.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Not even from Sarah? Discribed?
[laughing]
All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Schedule review. We are looking at our next meeting on Wednesday, February 8th.
And again, AI3 would be planning to attend that meeting for their presentation.
I just will be coming in always a little late on Wednesdays.
That sounds good.
You make it sound...
It worked.
Should we put KP in front of the agenda?
Is everybody else good for the eighth? Or at least those of us, Lisa, does the eighth work for you?
It does. Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so we will. We will have plenty of bodies. Last order of business, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We are adjourned.